I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing? Here. First item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, which is February 16th, 2015. Motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin. Any additions or corrections? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. We have three additions to the agenda. Someone like to move to put these on?
Yes, I'd like to move them to be placed on the agenda. I'd like to have them inserted after petitions and communications from the audience.
You want people to talk first?
Right, because these are, nevermind, it's public participation, public input.
Okay.
And then these items.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Bill Brown. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
Okay, that motion carries. We'll move to petitions and communications. I have BJ Ross. Did you wish to speak? And she'll be followed by Paula Venier.
Now?
Yes, go ahead. You have five minutes if you want.
Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to voice my concerns on this issue. I moved to Urbana into Edge of Mall Apartments, May 5th, 2012. I love my apartment, and the location is ideal for me with a library only two block walk and common ground food co-op in Bourbon's Market across the street. And if there's a non-protox item, the co-op doesn't carry schnooks, it's a 10-minute walk. I do not have a car. There are five floors at Edge of Mall with halls in the east-west direction. There are 10 apartments on each floor. The halls are divided with a longer stretching from the elevator. One, excuse me, makes two right-hand turns to go down the shorter hall. The shorter hall has four apartments and the longer six. My apartment is in the middle on the south side of the longer hall. When I moved in, and for the first year, there was only one smoker on my floor, across the hall diagonally towards the elevator from me. In the spring of 2013, my nonsmoking neighbors on either side of me moved out. Their apartments were rented to smoking tenants. The, and, excuse me, I lost my place. The one to the east between me and the elevator is a heavy smoker on oxygen. Needless to say, unless I am carrying something heavy, I take the stairs to the west, walking past the lighter smoker. In June 2014, a smoker across the hall moved away. She had been hospitalized for several weeks. Her apartment was rented to a nonsmoker with asthma and very concerned about the effects of secondhand tobacco smoke. She was placed across the hall from the heavy smoker. In November 2014, my nonsmoking neighbor directly across the hall from me died suddenly, and her apartment was rented to a smoker. I am now surrounded by smokers and their smoke. About a year ago, I noticed that I was very often blowing my nose but had no cold or allergies. Several months ago, I began having phlegm throughout the day. It even awakens me at night. I have been researching online sources, such as the American Lung Association and the National Cancer Institute, and have a few statements gleaned from such sites concerning effects of secondhand smoke, if I might offer them. Secondhand smoke, also called involuntary or passive smoking, is a mixture of gases and fine particles that include more than 7,000 chemicals, including hundreds that are toxic, and at least 69 that can cause cancer. Secondhand tobacco smoke is the third leading cause of preventable death in the United States. Closer to home, an estimated 2,900 Illinois citizens die each year from exposure to secondhand tobacco smoke. I quote now from the National Cancer Institute, "There is no safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke." After complaints from some of the tenants, two air purifiers were placed on the third and fifth halls, these are the heaviest smoking halls, and cold air vents were opened as a sign that the management is doing all they can to console the tenants. According to pulmonologists and public health, other than clearing the hallways of some of the smell of smoke, they are of little use as they do not remove the harmful toxins or small particles of secondhand smoke. The hall purifiers and open cold air vents are an acknowledgement of the dangers of secondhand smoke in Edge of Mall. Tobacco smoke cannot be confined. Our building to be healthy must allow no smoking in any apartment. Says 2013, of the 14 new tenants, five were smokers, two are heavy smokers, nine were nonsmokers.
You have one minute left.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Okay, I just have one.
BJ, are all the tenants in your building receiving assistance of some kind for assisted living or?
I don't, I'm not, so I don't.
You're not? You're just a regular tenant in the building?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. And is the building, I understand the building is actually owned by the HUD or managed by HUD?
I don't think it's either owned or managed, I don't really know. The management is Pacific Management.
Right.
It owns, it manages a number of apartment buildings. Who it's owned by, I'm not really sure.
Okay. Maybe I can get that from the next tenant.
But it is a HUD building.
All right. It is. There is HUD assistance there.
Well, I don't know if it's HUD assistance, it's a HUD, I don't know much about assistance of any kind. I've nev, don't, I'm not involved in that.
All right. Okay, thanks.
Eric?
So, you've actually raised, thank you for coming, you've raised a new issue, certainly for me to think about, I'm not really up on the issue of being subjected to secondhand smoke from other people's apartments.
I wasn't either before.
Do you, are you aware, I'm not aware either one way or the other, are you aware of whether there are any municipalities that have regulated apartment complexes with respect to smoking?
Apparently, according to the internet and a number of places that I have looked, in fact, a not, a smoking site told their people that they should be very, very careful before they sign a lease to make sure that the apartment isn't totally nonsmoking in the apartments as well. So, it seems to be moving in that direction, there's more and more of them, because they were telling their smokers that there are fewer places left to smoke in apartment buildings.
But this is presumably by virtue of private negotiation of leases as opposed to public regulation of smoking in apartments.
I don't know how that goes. I've said, well, from what I read, it seemed like cities were going more for that. It was more of a city ordinance that they were having apartments inside in a multi-unit building, smoke-free as well as the public areas.
Okay. Mr. Smythe is whispering in my ear that there is somebody else who will address the question that I'm asking, so I will.
Probably more knowledgeable than me.
I will, I will be quiet now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. I live at the edge of the mall. I'm, I'm one of the fortunately ones. I live on follow one with more. And we only have one person smoking that don't like to smoke, but she do smoke sometimes. And if people move out, people do not move in that smoke button. I want to protect my ass. I do have some cheese, and I hope my fellow become smoking. I'm ventilation at the edge of the mall is a huge problem. And I believe every time I go in the hallway, I smell smoke. Oh, people cooking, oh, don't be, um, smoke goes up to our apartments so they feel. I used to have a smoker above me because I lived there for 10 years. And I knew it came down to my apartment sometimes. And it should not be like that. Um, I believe smoking should be banned. And with the smokers that we have farm that live there now, they should move within the building on that same follow. And they have a responsibility to keep the smoke in with our means. Last week, it was 11:00 AM for the morning, and a neighbor who smokes after was earring Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I just make a?
Dennis would like to say something.
Yeah, and it's partly, I know that this council hasn't really looked at what I'm going to be proposing next week, which is an amendment to our smoking ordinance, and that material will be in your packet. But the issue here is that this unit that has a lot of elderly people, people who are on assisted living and do not, it's not able, they're not necessarily able to be able to relocate easily to other accommodations that are affordable, and they enjoy the location they live on, they've seen an encroachment, more and more people are coming in who have smoking. And my request is going to be that, all right, we accept the fact that people do smoke, HUD and the Housing Authority have recommendations that they have published nationally that they encourage people to go nonsmoking, to convert their buildings to nonsmoking buildings. But in any case, if that's not even possible completely to occur, this residence hall should have the same respect to protect the health of those people who are in it that we apply to hotels and motels, where if there is going to be a smoking person and there's going to be an apartment, they should be removed to either a separate wing or restricted to a second, a separate floor, so that their smoke doesn't infiltrate through the entire building and make many people sick, because some of these people now have, their doctors have informed them, they actually do are now, they have asthma. Their health is being deteriorated by secondhand smoke.
I like that thought, Dennis, but want a ventilation problem.
Yeah, the problem with the ventilation is that it goes up and down the building and it can't, and people on one floor, their smoke, if they're smoking, their smoke goes right up the ventilator and makes the person above them ill.
Thank you very much.
I'm the one that kind of started the ball rolling on all this discussion, and.
Give us your name.
I'm Amy Stevens, from the Edge of Mall. And I live on the fifth floor, and there's six apartments in my wing, and three of them have smokers in them. And it comes around the cracks in my door, and there's a smoker below me, a couple of floors, that smoke in their bathroom, and it comes out my exhaust fan in my bathroom. And it may come out my fan in my kitchen, I don't know, but I smell smoke in my apartment sometimes. And I've developed asthma, I was diagnosed with asthma on the first part of January by Doctor, he goes by the name of Dr. SuJ, I don't, can't pronounce his last name, and he says that air purifiers do no good as far as preventing problems from secondhand smoke. The air purifiers don't take out the toxic gases, and they do not remove the small particles that are in smoke. So, a lady across the hall from me has asthma as well, and she's lived in the apartment building for 21 years, and I've lived there for just one year. But we've both been sick since October, and I mean sick. We cough up mucus on a daily basis, we both do. I go through a large box of puffs every two days. My nose congests, my, it runs, waters, and I cough up mucus all day long. I'm cleared out right now, but it's because I've coughed up since I woke up this morning. And so, I'm on, I'm on cough medicine, cough syrup, asthma pills, and albuterol inhaler, and have seen my nurse practitioner, my family doctor, my pulmonologist, and on March 9th, I see my sleep apnea doctor, I have sleep apnea as well, and I'm afraid he's going to put me on oxygen to be piped into my CPAP machine because I'm having trouble breathing. And so, I'm a little upset at my situation. I, I had to fill out HUD paperwork to get into the building. I think it is controlled by HUD, and I can't locate a phone number, or I haven't been able to talk to anybody that know, that, from HUD, or that knows anything about it. And the management of this building is against me. It's against our, it's against, they say, they say the smokers have a right to smoke in their apartments. And I have, I wrote a letter of complaint and sent it to Pacific Management in Chicago, and one copy to the manager of Edge of Mall, and I'd like to read part of it if I could. "We have received your complaint letter regarding your health issues and secondhand smoke sent via certified mail on 2/11/2015. Edge of Mall Apartments does have a smoking ban in the common areas and with 15-foot of the building entrances and windows." Now, this is not true, because the smoke is thick in the hallways. How can they say they have a smoking ban? There's not people standing out in the hallways actively smoking, but the smoke is in the hallways and in the elevator, and the only part of our building that's protected from smoke is outs, is outside, you know? There's a sign on the door that says, "No smoking within 15 feet."
Yeah.
So, our door is protected, but we aren't. So, and then, and then they tell me, they tell me that our tenants have a leasehold right to perform legal activities inside their apartments. "We are happy to work with you to mitigate any specific smoke infiltration issues brought to our attention." But they also say that your request will not be granted because your request to provide specifically constructed smoking areas or converting the units to, at Edge of Mall Apartments to nonsmoking would cause an undue financial and administrative burden on the And then, they filled out this other form, and it says, "Your request has been denied because your request will place an undue financial burden on the property, and your request will place an undue administrative burden on the property."
Okay.
We're running out of time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I've copied those letters in the packet, which I've given to the mayor, and I hope that they'll become part of our packet for discussion next week.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, guess what I'm going to talk about? I've been working with the tenants at Edge of Mall, and I spoke to your council once before a little bit. So, the, just to clarify, Edge of Mall is owned by a private company, the Pacific Management, but it's HUD subsidized housing. It sounded like BJ's might not be, but I, but I thought the units, all the units were HUD subsidized. There are municipalities that have passed smoke-free ordinances. I can get you a list, there's a list, the Americans for Nonsmokers Rights has a, keeps sort of a register of them. A lot of them are in California, of course. And just to clarify, you know, we are very, the Public Health District, I don't see who I am, I'm Tara McCauley from the Public Health District, Champaign-Urbana, and we're very supportive of the smoke-free housing. We have had an initiative to encourage property owners to go smoke-free for a couple of years now, and it's been a voluntary, you know, program where we just contact property owners and tell them, you know, it's, there's a lot of benefit for them in terms of reducing their costs for turning over smoking apartments and less conflict among tenants, in addition to the health benefits. And just, there's been research done in terms of apartment buildings, sort of, smoke circulates throughout any building, and so, they, the research has shown that about 65% of the air in a building can be recirculated, and it's going to be different in every building, of course, depending on the ventilation and that kind of thing. At Edge of Mall, my understanding is they share ventilation, so it's circulating all over. And, but we, I also wanted to say, I really appreciate the work that Dennis Roberts has done, he's been over at the Edge of Mall building and met with the tenants, and we, I want to recognize that that's, it's great that you're helping them. But, you know, as you can see, people are getting sick, and, I mean, if there's anything that we can do at the Public Health District to assist you in getting you more information about smoke-free housing, we're more than happy to do that. Secondhand smoke makes people sick, and especially if you've already got a compromised immune system. Most of the people at Edge of Mall are seniors, and I guess, that's it. Oh, and just one other thing I wanted to say is, removing the, I think you all know this, but removing behavior, which is smoking, is not the same thing as removing smokers. So, we're not asking, well, maybe, maybe some of the tenants would like the smokers to move out, but that's not our position, we, you know, we're just asking people to go outside, we're not asking them to move out. Some people think of it as demonizing the smokers, and that's not what we're trying to do, we just don't want the secondhand smoke to make the other tenants sick.
Okay, thank you very much. Bill Brown?
I guess that kind of answered part of my question, is in your, when you found other cities that passed the smoke-free ordinances, is there some way to handle the transition for smokers that, who don't want to go out in weather like today and smoke? And so, either they'd have to move, and that seems like it's putting an undue burden on them, or quit smoking, and of course, you can offer programs to quit smoking, but a lot of people won't take that up. So, is, have you come across any solutions to that?
That is a good question. I don't know as much about how the cities have handled it. I know a lot of the housing authorities have been becoming smoke-free since HUD is recommending that. I know a little bit about how they've handled it in terms of, and it's been, it's varied. Some of them have grandfathered people in, some people, some places have asked them to pay an extra fee if they smoke, and some of them have just done it over time, like, this year, we're going to, you know, they've sort of phased it in, so, but I can research how the cities have done it, because I'm actually not sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm Esther Pat, 706 South Kohler Avenue, and I wanted to speak in support of the creation of, or your resolution promoting the idea of creation of a mental health court. I sent all of you an email message last week with the actual state statute, because listening to the discussion, it wasn't clear to me whether people were just talking about everything they want, or if there was confusion about what mental health court will do. Mental health court will not solve the problem. It's one strategy that addresses one particular issue, and that's recidivism among people who get arrested for crimes because of untreated mental health problems. And if you're at all familiar with how drug court works in the county, and I'm no expert on this, I just looked this stuff up, and actually, Bill Brown sent me some information about you, with drug court, the person has, the person's been arrested and is being charged with a drug offense that could result in prison. And drug court doesn't force anyone into counseling or treatment or rehab or anything. Drug court provides an opportunity for some people who qualify based on the qualifications on the state statute to avoid the prison term if they agree to a course of treatment, and then the court determines they follow through. And my understanding from reading the statute is that's exactly the same way drug court would work. So, for members of the public, if anyone's listening, who think that this is about getting the police to go out and arrest people just for being, having a mental health problem, and then threatening them with jail if they don't get treatment, that's not what this is about, and I can't speak for the police, but I'm sure that's not what they want to do. This is about, the police arrest people for allegedly committing crimes, and they take them to jail. And if there were mental health court, the people would still get arrested, and they would still get taken to jail. The difference is then what happens. And mental health court would provide, would basically. And mental health court would provide, would basically provide the opportunity for a person who committed the crime because of untreated mental illness to get the same break that is given now in drug court to people who got arrested for a crime that's really about their, their health problem, their addiction. And, and I was very bothered by the statement that, that this is about the government forcing people into, forcing people to take drugs. Mental health court doesn't force anyone to do anything. Any person who'd rather do the prison term, or any person who'd rather plead, you know, not guilty and try to win in court, and then if they lose, end up doing the prison term, has the right to do that. This is an opportunity for people who are facing a prison term to have an alternative. And the benefit, in terms of ultimately, how does this reduce police, you know, reduce crime, reduce police activity, reduce numbers of nights in the jail, et cetera, it wouldn't be on that initial time when the person is going to drug court, but presumably, I mean, I mean, or going to mental health court, hopefully, as, and it, and drug court has been successful, hopefully with mental health court also, and in some places, they do think it's successful. The, the person who's been arrested and then gets the treatment instead of going to prison won't get arrested again. That's the idea, that if they get the treatment, that then they will be better and, and, and they will not, you know, repeat the crime. Also, I don't know what the statistics are, but I'm pretty sure that the majority of people who, who are involved in mental health, well, actually, I shouldn't say that, I don't know what's going on, there are places. The majority of people who have mental health problems that are untreated do not need resident, do not need to be committed to a residential facility. People need to be connected with community services. They need the healthcare and the counseling and the medication. There are people who don't take their medication because they can't afford it. They were taking it, and then they stopped. Making sure that they're hooked in with the, the care so that they can get their medication, so that they can get the counseling, and if they never have had counseling, they've never been diagnosed before, that they'll have that opportunity and to get treatment. So I think it's a good idea, and again, in summary, it's not a solution to everything, but it is one strategy that has worked in other places, in some cases, to reduce recidivism, which is why the legislature passed the law to enable counties in Illinois to create it as well.
Thank you very much. Eric?
Does this imply that essentially everybody who would get arrested would be offered a mental health assessment? Because, because you did say that it might be that a condition had not previously been diagnosed. So I think that would imply, but I just wanted to be sure that's in your mind.
I don't think, I don't think it implies anything. Really, mental health, if you just read the statute, what mental health court is about is, in cases where the, I assume it would be, the defense attorney would be approaching the prosecution, but where the prosecutor and the defense attorney agree to take the case before a mental health court, which obviously means that the client, you know, is willing to participate in this, with, if, if the, if the accused meets the criteria set out in this, in this law, so it does not apply to anyone who commits a violent crime, for nonviolent offenses, for which probation could be a sentence. The person, if the prosecutor and the defense attorney agree, would have the option of going to mental health court, rather than just going into the circuit court and getting convicted and sent to prison. The opportunity to go to mental health court where a, a treatment plan would be agreed upon, and then, and then the person would have to follow it. Then if the court determines they follow it, then they hopefully get, actually, I noticed in the statute dimension that they, a reduced sentence, but I think the idea is that they wouldn't get, they wouldn't, their sentence would be probation rather than being time in the state penitentiary.
Okay. So this, but, so simp, but I guess, I guess I just want to be sure I understand. It seems to me, although maybe it's implicit rather than explicit, that if the condition, if it doesn't have to be based on a pre-existing, on a previously diagnosed condition, then it does seem to me that the agreement and the procedure would have to, would have to depend on a, a new mental health assessment.
When you say previous, previous to the arrest, or previous to the time of showing up to mental health court?
Well, previous, I guess, previous to the time of showing up to mental health court.
Oh, yeah, I would assume that that, that before, before someone goes to mental health court, I would assume an assessment's being made. Now, on the subject of, is every person who's admitted to the jail, you know, what kind of, what kind of mental health assessment does everybody get? I mean, for you or I, what will we get? I don't know the answer to that, and I'm, I'm sure Sheriff Walsh could tell you, and quite likely Chief Connelly could give you some idea of what, what, what's done about that, as far as all people who get arrested. But mental health court is just like drug court. Everybody, if you just read the paper, you can see plenty of people who get arrested for possession of a controlled substance end up getting the four years in prison. So it's not like everyone gets to go to drug court. It's just some people who meet the criteria and who the parties feel would benefit from it. And the person, and this is really, which is important for the people we're criticizing from the other side, the person has to want to do this. It is totally voluntary. And nobody has, nobody has to go into drug rehab, nobody has to go to Narcotics Anonymous just because they're arrested for a drug offense. It's up to them if they want to do that through drug court, and they're, if they're allowed. And likewise, no person with a mental health problem, regardless of what they were arrested for, has to go get drugs and/or counseling or whatever. It's, it's an option. So it, it increases the choices for some people. And mostly, it's, it works toward the goal of keeping people out of prison if it's not necessary. If there's a better alternative, and ultimately then hopefully means that they won't be in jail again, and the police won't have to spend time with them again.
Right.
I'm sorry, repeating myself. Any other questions?
Hello?
I think Aaron Ammons has a question. Aaron?
Yes, for Esther, is she still there?
Yes, I am. Sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Esther, given your experience on the council and, and in the tenant union, is there anything that you could offer about this issue, the smoking, that might be helpful?
Oh, the smoking issue.
Separate topic.
Well, the main, the only piece of information I was going to offer was, I whispered to Tara McCauley to save time here, was that just on the edge of the mall, that you should know it's, it's privately owned, but it's HUD subsidized. And the construct, initial construction was subsidized under an old, a program that was phased out, but used to be called Sec, don't get confused with vouchers, has nothing to do with vouchers, but it was also called Section 8 New Construction. And Florida House on Florida and Philo, Edge of the Mall, Country Brook in Champagne, and Round Barn, I always mix up, Round Barn Manor, not the one that's owned by Paul Zeroki, but the Round Barn Manor, are all, were all new construction that was subsidized by HUD. And so that's, I, I understand, I'm not sure why people all came to speak this week, if it's on the agenda next week, but if it's on the agenda next week, I, I'll be happy to come back and speak to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chris Evans?
Couple notes on drug court and mental health court. These are not solutions, they are window dressings. And I say that because they're but drops in an ocean. When mental health court for one year was being used, only five cases made it to the mental health court. Consider that there are 8,000 arrests per year. Drug court, it looks good, but it is not addressing near the volume that we have in this county. There have been over 10,000 drug prosecutions in this county since 1999. Drug court since 1999 has barely graduated over 200. 200 to 10,000. Drug court is, and oh, by the way, they don't allow anyone that sells drugs to be in that program. So as Aaron Ammons talked about last week, it's common for users to also be sellers, and they don't qualify to get into drug court. So those programs, while I support them and wish they were everywhere and all the time, and they would address a lot of issues, they barely get used. It barely addresses the mass incarceration that we go through in this county. And I, I'm here to, tonight, again, to congratulate the council and to encourage the council to pass the resolution to end mass incarceration. I, in my 20 years of off and on study of the local criminal justice system, I never thought I would see the day that local politicians in this county would ever take on such a resolution. It is very, it's, every time I read it, I can't believe I'm reading it. And it is an absolute essential to start sending this message out that the road we've been on for the last 20 years is the wrong road. If you have any reservations about supporting the resolution, I would really encourage you to read, you're not alone in reaching the conclusions that this resolution reaches. And I would encourage you to read Michelle Alexander's book, The New Jim Crow: Mass Incarceration in the Age of Colorblindness, released in 2011. And I, and there are other books. The recent book that I'm reading now is pulled over by three Kansas, University of Kansas professors who are analyzing traffic stops. But these, this kind of research is now coming to the forefront, and mass incarceration has been an absolute disaster. I told you last week about the poverty that it has created in our county. And here we are with one of the wealthiest counties, and we have the most construction outside of Chicago in the state of Illinois. We had $900 million worth of construction in 2013 alone, according to Ed Charlo. And here we are, the third highest poverty rate in the state. So I really encourage you to send a message to the county board that jailing is not the way to go, and I really applaud the council for this great leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. We have a presentation by Snow Angels.
I'm Brandon Bowersox-Johnson, one of the commissioners on the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, and I'm here with Cynthia Hoyle, one of our fellow commissioners. And we're briefly going to talk about Snow Angels. You have a busy agenda here, so we'll, we'll try to be very, very succinct. This is a topic that is very timely, unfortunately, with the weather that we're still having here in March. The Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Commission's job is to advise city council on these matters, and we had a presentation that Cynthia gave to the commission a few months ago about these voluntary programs to encourage neighbors to help look out for each other, clear snow, and make sure that people can safely walk in our community, and also especially that kids can safely get to school and use sidewalks and crosswalks and bus stops. So the commission heard the presentation and was very excited to learn about some of this, and voted to share this with you, the city council, and voted to ask that you all consider this and think about whether the city could in any way support or sponsor these kind of programs. So without any further ado, I'll hand it over to Cynthia Hoyle to talk about some of these examples from around the country.
Thank you all for having us tonight. And I did make this presentation a year ago last month to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. And I have revised it a little and provided you with a little more information for this. I've got some information here, since we are a complete streets community. I thought I would remind everyone that part of being a complete streets community is to have policies that reflect our, our commitment to equal access, safety, economic vitality, and quality of life, regardless of the mode of transportation that you use. The Federal Highway Administration has guidelines for snow removal, and they, they suggest and state that removing snow and ice should be thought of as a community responsibility that covers the entire public right-of-way, and that since sidewalks are part of the public right-of-way, efforts to remove snow and ice need to occur at a reasonable time period following a snowfall. And then it talks about what you need to have effective snow and ice removal, which includes a timeframe for removal, responsibility for removal, ordinances, compliance efforts, planning and outreach strategies. And I've tried to include the links here so that you can go and review these later. Urbana has the distinction of being the only gold level bicycle-friendly community in the state, and we leapt from bronze to gold, which is quite an accomplishment. We had feedback from the National Organization on this, and one of the things that they said to us was that we need to create a maintenance program that includes regular cleaning, repair, and snow removal for bicycle and pedestrian network, for our bicycle and pedestrian network, that our current path and sidewalk snow removal policy presents a serious obstacle to year-round travel with a bicycle. And of course, they're focusing only on bicycles. Add to that that we have been working for a number of years to be a multimodal community, and this is 30% of our residents who walk, bike, or ride the bus for trips to work. So this does not count all of the other trips in the day, which are the majority of the trips in a community. They're, they're just not counted because this community survey doesn't count them the same way. So we have a lot of people walking, biking, and taking the bus, and that's one of the reasons why we don't have a lot of traffic congestion in our community. I took all of these pictures here in town, by the way. And so I'm going to show you some of the things that are going on here. For example, on North Lincoln, pedestrians darting out into the street in order to avoid mounds of snow that had been piled onto sidewalks, which, these are young men, they were able to do that. On Washington Street, you have pedestrians walking in the street because the sidewalks aren't cleared. This is a businessman on his way home from work. He's walking in the street at Washington and Philo. We have students walking along Broadway. Some of the neighborhoods, the WUNA West Urbana Neighborhood Association in particular, has a culture of snow removal that they have developed in their neighborhoods, so they have a much greater rate of clearance from sidewalks than most of the other neighborhoods in the community. This is a particular pet peeve of mine, that someone went and cleared the sidewalk, and then these people either hired someone to clear their driveway or did it themselves, and piled their snow onto the sidewalk, blocking it. This is across the street from Wiley Elementary School. I don't understand that sort of behavior. We have businesses that hire people to do snow removal, and they often do not also hire them to clear sidewalks, and in fact pile the snow in such a way that it blocks getting onto the sidewalk. This is on Philo Road. This is on Ray Street. Someone has made the effort to clear a little space there, but it's still too, much too narrow for anybody who was using a wheelchair, which is why you see them in the streets whenever there's snow on the roads. This is a bus stop. You can see the bus stop here, and you can see how people are waiting, and this is across from Thomas Paine. The Transit District gets calls every year from people who can no longer get to the bus stop, so they're stuck because they have uncleared sidewalks. So you see, there are people climbing over mountains of snow left on the sidewalks. This one, I happened to witness, the mother and child, there's a little girl here in front of her who looked like she was four or so. Their house is here, and they have to park on the street around here, and she had groceries and trying to get to their house. She can't walk in the street with a preschooler, and so they were trying to get down the sidewalk to get home because it was uncleared. So snow removal programs involve both ordinances that require snow removal, but even in communities that have the ordinances, that's not enough by itself. You really have to have encouragement and assistance programs. And I have done a, I gathered information on programs from around the country, and I thought I would share some of that with you. So Snow Angels, some places they're called Snow Buddy Programs. They are volunteers who clear snow from sidewalks, driveway entrances, and pathways. And there are a variety of forms that these take. This one's out of British Columbia. Most of the time, they are specifically designed to assist elderly and disabled people. So some of them are neighborhood-based, they pair people with individuals in some locations, in some areas, they assign neighborhoods or sidewalks, much like you do a trash removal, you know, when people adopt a street. But it's an opportunity for neighbors to engage with one another and help people who are in need. Now, Lawrence, Kansas, I liked their program I wanted to offer. It is an example. They call it Safe Winter Walkways, and they match volunteers with neighbors. They commit to the season, and they shovel snow each snowfall. And they, I, one of them also provides people with snow shovels, which I thought was interesting. This is Fairhaven, New Jersey, and here they've engaged students, and some communities do this very successfully. Here, they have 70 students at this school, and it looks like a middle-school-age student. And the mayor there set up a program called Be a Good Neighbor Program. And this was one of those initiatives, and it's been very successful in particularly helping senior citizens with snow removal. And it's been very successful in particularly helping senior citizens with snow removal. In our community, I see the senior citizens clearing their sidewalks. What I don't see happening are the rental properties where college students and other rental property residents live. And typically, they're perfectly able to clear their sidewalks. Columbia, Missouri, has Adopt a Sidewalk. So there, it's like Adopt a Street. And so you adopt a sidewalk, and volunteers agree to clear snow in those areas. Priority areas are determined by the city. So for example, you could choose the safe routes to school, the main transit routes, et cetera, as locations. Also, facilities where residents have mobility issues, areas around that, probably the property itself clears their sidewalk, but across the street might not. Lincoln, Nebraska, has a program, and they have churches that assist in sign-up for this program. In Arbor, Michigan, this was a really interesting one I just found. The neighborhood itself created a program. And it was this gentleman who, whose quote is here, he said, "I came gradually to understand that a system that assigns sidewalk maintenance to every homeowner will never function well for pedestrians. Eight out of 10 walkways might be cleared, but there is always going to be someone who is sick or out of town or hasn't gotten around to it yet." So they did a crowdsourced funding program. They bought the little tractor that you see right here. And they have a year-round plan with 12 volunteer drivers, and they clear it themselves, which I thought was a really interesting idea to think about. Is there any way that we can help enable people to come up with something like that? Davenport, Iowa, has a Snow Angels program. It's a connection between people who ask and people who volunteer. In Gary, Indiana, they have a youth program. And it's not associated with a school, but with a youth program. And I thought that was an interesting model for us to consider as well. In Hamilton, Ontario, what I liked that they did, I thought I would include this, is they leave a little note on the recipient's mailbox, letting them know that they've cleared the snow off for them. And they allow people 14 years of age or older to volunteer for their program. They also ask for organizations and companies to volunteer and be Snow Angels. Chicago has a big snow removal program, and they call it Snow Corps. They have a website all set up for people to go and register, both people who need it and people who are volunteering. And what I wanted to specially show you was their Winter Wonder Award Program. And I think that doing public recognition and awards, some places have a Snow Angel of the Month, and they put it in the newspaper and on the city website. Where people are recognized for having done this is a really great way to develop a culture of people helping one another with this problem. And so they go through and list, you know, they put them on their website, they receive an award, and they have a number of things that they do. And that's an idea for us to consider. I included their poster here, although there's some much better artwork I think we could mimic for our program. So I went through and listed some other programs that have come to my attention. So you can see they're all over the country, in all kinds of towns, big and small. And these are just, some of them had, this is from a Facebook page, Allen County Snow Angels has one. This is another one that I thought was really interesting. Edmonton has that. And she, you might not be able to see, but she has angel wings there and her snow shovel. I also wanted to bring to your attention, and I know this comes up and you have this on your website, but I heard a, there is a show on WILL AM Radio called Legal Issues in the News. And there was one in 2014 called Slippery Slope. And it was Professor Christine Hurt. And she talked about how, that in fact you might be liable as a property owner for not clearing your property of snow and ice obstructions, particularly as commercial property owners. And that allowing dangerous accumulations of snow and ice may put them on, as she referred to it, a slippery slope. And so of course, we have the General Assembly in our state passed the Snow and Ice Removal Act. This is posted on your website. Nevertheless, the legend continues, apparently started by people who do not want to have to clear the snow and ice from their sidewalks, that you can be sued if you do so, which is not true. In fact, that was on Facebook today, someone posted that. And so you are protected from any liability for removing snow and ice from your sidewalk. The City of Urbana does have a snow removal ordinance. It does apply only to the university district, the South Philo Road Business District and the downtown district. You also have the frequently asked questions there in case people have questions about it. And I wanted to bring to your attention the program that's Safe Routes to School through our grant, our last grant, created that is already out in the community and provides some starting point for us. I brought one of my yard signs in tonight, and I'm happy to show that to you. We have yard signs, we had postcards, flyers, and we've worked with schools, sometimes PTAs distributed those materials, and encouraged property owners around the area to remove snow and ice. And the idea was to thank people for doing it, not to shame people for not doing it. And so that is a program that we have. That's a picture for the people at home of our, these are our yard signs. And they show up really rather well in the snow and ice, amazingly. The pink is a great color in snow. So we've also had billboards and bus boards. We've done radio ads. In the years when we've been able to pay for those things, I feel like I have seen better compliance and more people clearing their sidewalks. But we don't have our grant funding right now, so we're not, we had these signs from the previous grant, and I try to recollect them because they're kind of expensive, and reissue them. So I would like to encourage Urbana to transition from this, where we have the pedestrian in the street, to here, where you, for example, you see middle-school kids walking up a cleared sidewalk on Broadway. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have that I can answer.
Thank you very much. There's a question. Charlie has a question.
Cynthia, I think, I appreciate everything that's been done, but you touched on one particular point earlier, which is rentals. And given that, you know, two-thirds of Urbana is rental, and you know, just the non-objective observations of just walking around, it's, you know, when I walk across the sidewalk of a rental, it's typically a small rental, not the bigger complexes. Small rentals, they're the ones that don't shovel sidewalks. And I just don't see any way of getting that to happen short of an ordinance. You know, it's not going to happen voluntarily. And until you require it, that it's in the leases or whatever, that the residents have to clear snow, it just isn't going to happen.
Well, that's certainly something I would support and have advocated for since I moved here. I lived in Oklahoma before, where they don't have as much snow, and they, we had a snow removal ordinance. So I was rather shocked when I moved here, and there wasn't one. However, as I said, even with the ordinance, you still need these programs. The West Urbana Neighborhood has a very high number of rental properties, and yet their sidewalks are among the best in the community. And that's because neighbors take it upon themselves to clear those sidewalks. So what I'm suggesting is that we identify some high priority areas and think, and perhaps we could create a program like Adopt a Street, where we have Adopt a Sidewalk, and have organizations, neighbors, churches, youth, whoever, clearing those, whether or not the people who live there clear them. And I frequently see people out, even in my own neighborhood, there are neighbors who take their snow blower and clear their entire block, but the next block down, you know, there's somebody that's not cleared their sidewalk. And people are willing to go a certain distance, but they're not going to clear the entire neighborhood on their own.
No, we just, we just need a lot of enthusiastic snow blow, snow blower users.
That's right. That's right. And then also, you start creating the expectation that you will remove snow. We do require people to mow their grass, even if they are renters. And mowing the grass does not, as far as I know, present a safety issue. We have had people run over and killed because they were walking in the street because they couldn't walk on the sidewalk. I don't think we've ever had high grass obstruct a sidewalk and force people into the street. Maybe that's happened, I'm not aware of it. But I think when we talk about that it's a burden on people, I wonder why we require people to mow their grass and not remove the snow. That's just a question that has puzzled me.
Well, we, I think we have more compliance now since we passed the ordinance. And what I would envision would be to gradually expand the area. But I think just getting people to, you know, share in a neighborhood.
Yes.
And get the machine, that seems like a very effective way to do it. But I walk, and I've seen much more sidewalks cleared over the years. And I think it is a social thing that people become aware of it and then start thinking this is what is expected and it's the right thing to do.
I think sometimes people really are that oblivious because they don't walk anywhere, and it hasn't occurred to them that other people are walking because they do not have a car or can't drive. And so there is some of that, that is just a lack of awareness.
Or they want to walk.
Some people would prefer to walk. This is correct.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. Oh, I guess Eric has another.
Yeah, you've been out and around the community with the, you know, taking these pictures. But you've also, of course, seen places where, and you actually took pictures of places where the sidewalks were fine. I don't, you probably didn't like keep track of numbers, but would you have a rough estimate of what fraction of the sidewalks you saw were cleared and what fraction were not?
Well, it really depends on where you are. We do have some areas that are problematic and that we probably would have to do some work in coordination with Public Works. Because for example, along Lincoln Avenue and along Vine, we have very narrow public right-of-ways. And so when they clear the streets, it really piles an enormous amount of snow onto those sidewalks. And I know Prairie School, for example, worked with Public Works because they ended up with so much snow from Washington on their sidewalks that their machinery wouldn't remove it. So some of, we'll probably have to have some of that in figuring out how we're going to deal with that. And I know it's an issue for Public Works. Bill and I have talked about that. And so they're struggling with budget limitations and increased street network and trying to get it cleared. But I think somehow we can all work together and find a way to make it better.
But, okay, so those are special cases where, for example, Lincoln Avenue, where the sidewalk is right next to the roadway. So where the roadway is cleared, the sidewalk is piled up. But let's say, except for those special cases, in cases where there is a parkway, let's say, between the sidewalk and the, and the street, what fraction of those sidewalks would you say were, that you saw were, I mean, we don't have a citywide survey, so you're the next best thing. What fraction of those sidewalks?
In some areas, I would say anywhere from a third to a half were consistently cleared. And in some areas, I would say three-quarters or more of the sidewalks were snow-impacted. I mean, right now on Philo, if you go down it, there are some big properties that are not clearing the pathways. And there are churches I see that haven't cleared it, even though they hire someone to clear their parking lots. So some of that could be conversations with people. I think if someone called and said, hey, did you know all the kids trying to get to Wiley can't get down the street on your side because the sidewalk hasn't been cleared? You think you can get your folks to clear that, too? And then after the trucks come through, someone has, there's also places where they have volunteers that go through and clear the ramps again, because sometimes people have paid to have them cleared, and the people clearing it can't wait until all the streets are cleared to do their work. So someone goes back and helps clear those ramps, because even if the sidewalk's cleared, if the ramp's covered, they can't get to it.
So if we were to extrapolate from your informal survey, that over half the sidewalks in the city that could readily be cleared because they don't have serious logistic problems are in fact not cleared. So if we accept that, then it sounds to me as though we have a problem that we should address in some fashion.
Well, I agree with your assessment.
Okay, we better move on, I think, but thank you so much.
Well, thank you all very much. I appreciate the time. And if I can provide any more information, please, please let me know.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have the results of the renaming contest for the Boneyard Creek Improvements. That will be followed by Bruce Hannan with the History of Silver Creek.
We'll jump right to the results. Spoiler alert. I'm Brandon Boyes, the Economic Development Manager, and I'm here with Pauline Tanos, the Public Arts Coordinator. We're going to go briefly over the public naming contest that was conducted for the Boneyard Creek Improvements Project area. And yes, that is the official name at this time. We're going to go through the process, the timeline, the individual steps, and then the outcome. So the contest process was planned, it came from the intention to have a celebration event at the Boneyard Improvement Area. On April 11th, we'll be having Jack Mackey, the artist who designed a lot of the public art components, come. And we wanted this to be the full sort of reveal of the park with when the weather's better, when the landscaping's grown in and completed, when the project's fully completed. I think we were over 90% when we held the ribbon cutting, but it was a cold day. And it'll also coincide with the Boneyard Arts Festival. So that was a group of a variety of city staff. We've also had some discussion about this at the Streetscape Committee, which is another assortment of city staff, but also the Urbana Business Association. We made an inquiry with the City County Communications and Marketing Association on how other communities have held these kinds of naming contests. And then we also consulted our legal department. So the timeline for the naming contest is there on the slide. We started with a public call for names, had a legal review of those names to ensure that there wasn't copyright infringement. A jury was convened, a public vote was held, and now we're here for council review. And ideally, we'll have settled on the name before the public ceremony.
Hi, I'm Pauline. I haven't got a chance to meet you all. So as Brandon said, first of all, the first stage was we placed some submission boxes at the Urbana Free Library. We actually placed two boxes at the library. And we also placed a box at the Phillips Recreation Center and at the City of Urbana Building. We also set up an online survey so people can submit their ideas online, which a lot of people found easier. We marketed this initiative through a press release, and we had the stories featured on News Gazette and Smile Politely. The Public Arts Program sends out a monthly e-newsletter, so we included that on a couple of newsletters. We printed some posters, and we posted on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and the city website.
So staff also recently discovered that when we use email marketing software, which is basically any time you receive an email from a subscription service and you have a link on the bottom that allows you to unsubscribe or manage your subscription, that's, that's an email marketing software. The one we're using was being systematic, it was systematically blocking to all @urbanaillinois.us addresses. So council was, did not receive some of the direct communication on this campaign, and it's also affected a few of our other programs. So we're working on fixing that, but we wanted to let you know that you would have received a little more communication on this had we been aware of that problem.
So we apologize about that. But even though we had that problem, we still received 98 name submissions. So I think overall, it's pretty successful, and we got the attention we wanted. Out of 98 names, I decided to take out about four off the list because of their offensive nature. And we received 41 names from the boxes and 57 online. The next step was staff invited several members of the community to serve as jury for this naming contest. And this includes Mayor Laurel Pressing, so School Superintendent Don Owen, Mike Hozier, who owns several downtown properties, including the space right next to the park, Alan Strong, who's also a neighbor of the park, owner of Silver Creek and Courier Cafe, and Drew Wilder, who's a reporter and co-anchor of WCIA.
A resident of downtown.
Also a resident, longtime resident of downtown Urbana. Also a resident, longtime resident of downtown Urbana. And at their meeting on February 12th, the jury selected three finalists. And they are Boneyard River Walk, Boneyard Creek Walk, and Boneyard Creek Park. Next, we opened up the naming contest for our final public vote. We invited the public to vote via social media and the city webpage. And again, we set up another Survey Monkey online and received a total of 48 unique votes. And the results are, Boneyard River Walk won by 46 percent and Boneyard Creek Walk got 29 percent and Boneyard Creek Park got 25 percent. Thank you. I know a lot of you participated or helped spread the word, so thank you for that.
Okay. Bill?
When they submitted the names, was there, was there a form to do that? Did they, were they, did they have an opportunity to like enter a justification for the name or why it would be historically significant, anything like that? Or was it just you write a name on a piece of paper and stick it in the box?
So are you asking if we provided any prompts to the?
Yeah. Ask for a name or did anybody offer historic like reasoning? How did that work?
We did not really offer anything like that in our promotion efforts. But I think a lot of submissions did, you know, try to include the name Boneyard in their ideas. And some of them actually include, they attach separate papers, you know, describing their reasoning behind their choice and even some historic articles they found. So I thought that was interesting how the public really care about that sort of stuff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Bruce Hannan.
Boneyard is the name for junkyard. And I've been opposed to that name ever since first hearing it when I moved to town in '65. A little history on the Boneyard. In this map drawn in 1877, mainly for the campus, but it shows a lot of familiar streets. Here's Springfield Avenue, Healy Street, Green Street, the main part of the campus where the Union is now, the large Union Building. So I want to get you oriented, Beckman down here, University Avenue at the top. And here is the Boneyard coming across here in another branch that cut across the middle of the main quad. But on this particular branch, remember, 1877, is the name Silver Creek. And that didn't originate with these people who drew the map. That seems to have come from some of the early settlers who were talking to some of the original settlers here, the Potawatomi. And they seemed to convey this idea of Silver Creek. About 25, well, I should, I should give more of the history in chronological order. Around 1900, 1894 to 1904, when Draper was president of the university, he started a campaign to name the Boneyard, a name already pretty well fixed, to rename the Boneyard Silver Creek. He had a woman in a very fancy Victorian gown standing on the bottom of the creek and touching the upper parts of the bank. It was that small and around the turn of the last century. Because the Boneyard is, watershed is four and a half square miles of completely urbanized area, all the runoff from that surface arrives at the creek very quickly and has reamed out the creek over the years. So now on the campus, it's, as you know, big enough to drive a semi down it. Quite a change. So the program in 1900 was defeated by the students who shouted it down, saying, the creek is full of junk. Why call it Silver Creek when it's that way? And I think it was, in one sense, a cry to the authorities of the community to clean the place up. And nevertheless, the effort failed. The next president, Edmund James, tried the same thing and the same thing happened. The students shouted it down. But about 25 years ago, Alan Strong and I were standing on the bank of the Boneyard by the restaurant now known as Silver Creek. And he had that day purchased the, he's a good friend of mine. That day, he had purchased the building. And as he said, I paid all this money for this building and a 10-car parking lot. And I'm going to do this and this and this. And he's listing this and he's getting more and more depressed as he talks about the things he has to do. And he said, furthermore, I don't even have a name for it. And we're on the banks of the Boneyard. I said, hey, why don't you start a campaign to rename the Boneyard Silver Creek and start by naming your restaurant Silver Creek? He thought that was a great idea, so he named it Silver Creek. That's where we stand today. I don't know except that the, of any other reason to change except that the City of Champaign, the university, and Urbana now have spent tens of millions of dollars on this creek. And I think that it is time to change the name of it. And I think you will start it well here if you submit to the people who I just saw here, this wonderful survey, start not with the name Boneyard, but say, look, we could abandon the name Boneyard and pick up some other name and see what comes up then. But the same thing's happening in Champaign right now. They're talking about changing Green Street and its connection between university and downtown Champaign as a walkway. And they have certain places where they are arching the street with one of these metal things that you use here, Crane Alley-type arches. Boneyard Creek Walk. And I got after the city council there right away and I said, look, don't, don't do that. Don't name it yet. Let's see what we can do with the name to change the name after all of this money is spent on it. It's no longer a Boneyard. It's no longer a junkyard. It's a Silver Creek.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Bruce? Well, I think that since it is, it has been beautified, I think we should have a nicer name. So I agree with your project. Yes, Diane?
Well, as, as you know, I had contacted you and some other staff members after the results of the naming contest was revealed. Are we discussing this now?
Well, we're, we can discuss with Bruce and then it's, we're not, this isn't a topic that we're acting on tonight. This is just background discussion because we're not, we don't have anything to vote on tonight.
Well, I do appreciate the information. I agree. I love the name Silver Creek and I think the downtown park needs to have a name that's inviting to the public, especially visitors and newcomers to the community and that this park that we've created needs to be a destination. And so I, I appreciate the work and the effort that went into the contest. But the Boneyard River Walk, this is not a river by any stretch of the imagination and it never will be. So I don't think River Walk is even an accurate name there. And I would like to have a more inviting name for this park. So I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what other options are. But it really, it has to be a destination that invites people to it and distinguishes it from other parts of the creek. So I look forward to coming up with something more inviting.
Anyone else?
I think Urbana would lead the way on this name change by naming your part here, your new part here. The next thing for you all to do in Urbana is to take off that sheet piling that was put on back in the 50s that runs from Goodman over to now connecting with your project.
Well, we just did phase one. We're not done yet.
A good cutting torch. And down it would come. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much, Bruce. Okay, we don't have any unfinished business to deal with tonight. So let's go to reports from standing committees, the committee of the whole. Eric Jacobson?
Yes, so. So on behalf of the committee of the whole, first item we're bringing is ordinance number 2015-02-018. An ordinance vacating an alley south of Hill Street between Romine Street and Matthews Avenue. I, on behalf of the committee, move for adoption of this ordinance. Second?
Motion by Jacobson, seconded by Smythe with a murmur from Ammons, but. Okay, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
On behalf of the committee, I bring ordinance number 2015-02-019. An ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 908 East Oregon Street, Urbana, Illinois. On behalf of the committee, I move approval of this ordinance.
A second. Motion by Jacobson, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Bill Brown?
Yeah, I'd be happy to see this get into hands where it'll be redeveloped. I just, I think we've had it for two years and I'd just encourage us to, if there are other properties that we own that we intend on selling, maybe put up a sign earlier and see if any of the neighbors would be interested in buying them. Or if somebody had been living in the neighborhood for five or 10 years, wanted to buy an empty lot and build a house because they got tired of living in an old house instead of just taking an offer when it comes. So yeah, I'll vote yes for this.
Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Was there supposed to be another vote? From, for sale of property? Mayor Pressing? Yes. Okay, that motion carries.
Okay. Ordinance number 2015-02-020. An ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 14, Section 14-7, regarding the schedule of fees, live scan fingerprinting fee. On behalf of the committee, I move approval.
Motion by Jacobson, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Resolution number 2015-02-008R. Resolution in support of establishing a mental health court for Champaign County. On behalf of the committee, I move approval.
Motion by Jacobson, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Bill?
Yeah, I'm in favor of this, I guess. I think like Chris said earlier, it's just a start. And there are potential pitfalls to avoid and there's, because when you go into the program, you sign away some of your rights basically because you don't always get the same hearing you would have before you would be reincarcerated if you start failing the program, things like that. But that's what they've been dealing with, with drug courts, so maybe they can find a way around that. But I think it's important to also advocate for the Adult Assessment Center. That would be similar to the Youth Assessment Center. The ball's just starting to roll on and it'd be like crisis intervention and handling some of these really low-level cases that don't need to go to the jail at all, hopefully. So that's, I think, all I had.
The clerk, please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Resolution number 2015-02-009R. Resolution regarding incarceration and incarceration alternatives in Champaign County. On behalf of the committee, I move approval.
Thank you.
A motion by Jacobson, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? Diane?
Yes. I attended, along with at least three other city council members, I think, last Tuesday, the county board meeting where the consultants presented the plans and then the public had an opportunity for public input. And I found it a very useful discussion and actually learned a lot about the proposal. And two things stuck with me from, in particular, from that discussion. And the first, and I had heard it from several other people, but it was brought up again last Tuesday, that the, which relates to this resolution. And specifically, two of the five components of the resolution. The first is regarding efforts to reduce numbers of persons incarcerated in Champaign County. And what was brought up multiple times was the possibility that the state of Illinois will be trying to reduce the state prison population by shifting at least some of that population back to the county and the county jails, which means it will have an impact on the county's ability to reduce population in the jail significantly and it may even increase it over the long run. We just don't know what the governor's proposal will end up doing. So the, the, the part of this resolution, the first part urges the Champaign County Board to work with other entities to plan for a substantial reduction in the number of people incarcerated. I, I am less comfortable with that this week after learning about the potential impact of the state's action. So I would offer an alternative language for your consideration. I do have some things for you to consider. I would say something to the effect, we strongly support efforts to develop a facility design that is flexible and responsive to the needs of the people it houses. And this would leave open, being able to respond to what the state does, but also promotes a design that could accommodate the varying levels of custody that were talked about last week, from the low-risk to the high-risk people, separating women from men, providing for single occupancy rooms, family visitation areas, facilities for healthcare, the Adult Assessment Resource Center within the jail, and programs for reentry and preventing recidivism and that sort of thing. But instead of focusing on absolute reduction in numbers, I don't think that's as realistic of an approach. And then my other takeaway from the meeting last week pertains to the last of the items in this resolution. And it was discussed, or several of the speakers revealed that they've begun working on a grant proposal to the MacArthur Foundation for funding to both develop and then implement what they're called a systemic plan, basically for programs and services. And this would dovetail with the facilities plan. And it would accomplish what the last statement in this resolution was talking about. But they used a term called "co-joined." And so I would suggest wording that last section. We strongly support efforts to obtain grant funding to develop a co-joined systemic plan for programs and services, meaning that this systemic plan would be developed and implemented along with a facilities plan and the two would work together to meet the needs of the county.
So I will oppose both these amendments and I'll tell you why separately. As far as the first one, that the fear that was expressed by several people on the county board that the governor would force prisoners back into the county jail. And so I did a little research on that. The governor has no power to do that. The distribution of people. The distribution of people who have been arrested and charged and convicted, the distribution of people between county facilities and the state prison is statutorily governed. It's, it's a matter of state statute. So, the governor would have to convince the legislature to change the statutes in order to do that. And I think there is, now this, I'm making a political judgment now, I think the chance of this governor convincing this legislature to do that for him is zero. I think the only chance that the governor has of reducing the prison, state population level, prisoner population level, is to use his authority to commute sentences. As far as the, the second item, I don't think that it is satisfactory. We do not rely on grant support to support criminal justice activities. We don't rely on grant support to support the police. We don't rely on grant support to support the jail. We build that into recurring budgets. In my opinion, and the intent of my resolution is, that the mental health assessment and treatment of people who come in contact with the criminal justice system, that the substance abuse treatment, assessment and treatment of people who come in contact with the criminal justice system should not depend on grant support that may come and go year to year, but should be built into the recurring costs for a comprehensive criminal justice system. That's the intent of my resolution, and I think that's, and I think, I believe, I believe in fact, that the person, I've been in contact with the person who has volunteered to head up the, the effort to obtain the MacArthur grant, Lynn Branham, and I believe that that's her intent also. I believe that, and she's an expert in criminal justice, that's her area of concentration in, in law, and, you know, scholarly concentration as a law professor. And so, I, I would, I strongly prefer the resolution to remain as it is.
Could I ask Bill to please take the chair?
Yes.
I've-
Mayor Presson?
Yeah, I'm very concerned about enabling the state of Illinois to shift people from state prisons to county jails. I don't think we should be encouraging them to do any such shift, especially when there's discussion, starting with the governor, about taking a half of what the local income tax share is from local governments. We cannot afford to do the things that we're asked to do now, and I think we should strongly resist any effort to shift. I think the state needs to do the same sort of thing about why are certain people in jail? I think there's overcrowding in state prisons, people that probably don't need to be in prison. And I think there's huge agreement around the country now between people from very different political viewpoints, that we need to stop being the country that has more people in jail than any other nation on earth. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take it back.
I'd like to say something else.
Okay, Aaron?
I think that what the mayor just said is also very much in line with my thoughts. Now, we, and a lot of folks in the community have been working on this issue for a long time, and one of the number-one things that we would not be supportive of was increasing bed numbers. And ultimately, Diane, your amendment, or your friendly amendment that you're proposing would do just that. And so, I would be absolutely opposed to any changes in this resolution. I think the spirit of what Eric brought forth, and what the mayor just said, is that we do not, we don't have the capacity even to do some of those things financially. And it's just, it's not germane to where we were going with this in a, in a new way of looking at criminal justice, a system critique. And so, opening up the opportunity, or the idea even, that we would create more space, I'm definitely absolutely opposed to that.
Dennis?
Okay, and I can go with that, but the wording that Diane offers, which reads, "Strongly supports efforts to develop a facility design that is flexible and responsive to the needs of the people it houses," could be interpreted very differently as well. One of the options that was discussed at the board meeting, which wasn't really resolved because the, the planners have not taken their design drafting to that level yet, to show us specific plans for any kind of layout, well, I guess they provided a layout, but they talked about using new space that might be created, not just for incarceration, but for offering community-based services, which could include the training and, and support that could lead to a reduction in recidivism by members who are currently incarcerated. And they talked about that different kinds of programs require different kinds of surfaces and material structure, so that there's a different feeling when you're in them that's different than the cellular restraint of the jail as we think of it traditionally. So, since the, and I don't know if we, maybe what this, maybe this sentence that she suggests could be interpreted, could be joined into the document without the reduction of the paragraph that she thought might, it might replace.
Diane?
I wasn't advocating to increase bed numbers. I was advocating to recognize the fact that there are some unknowns out there, and whether a design, where the, the facility design is still in the very early stages, and as Dennis noted, it, it does offer the ability to design a facility that would include space for the various types of programming that people have been advocating for. So, so that's why, rather than focus on a numbers statement, which, I understand where, what you're coming from, and I agree with it, but I'm just saying, maybe if we kept this more general, we would have a, it would be a more, it would offer more options for the future. And, and I strongly support focusing on the, a facility that, that serves the needs of the people that are housed there, but also meets the needs in terms of programming and services.
Eric, sorry?
Yeah, so I, I hope the, the, I hope, I hope, please, I hope, Ms. Marlin, you don't take the intensity of my response to mean that I, I don't believe that you're well-aligned with, with, you know, the purpose of the resolution, because I know you are. The, and I had a very interesting, and it was, to me, an important conversation with Sheriff Walsh after that meeting on Tuesday. And I think that there's one, although it wasn't a public conversation, I think there's one thing I can quote him on, because he repeated it several times in order to be sure I understood it, and it was a four-word statement. He said, "We do not treat." He, he, and he wasn't saying this as, by way of saying, he didn't think people needed treatment. He was saying, "That's not my mission." The, I, I, so, so the, he said, and he elaborated, he said, "If somebody comes into the system with a pre-existing diagnosis and a prescription, they'll be maintained, they'll get the prescription, that'll be provided to them, but there will be no addition, there is, at this point, no additional diagnosis, no, you know, moderation, no change in treatment." I really believe that, so I understand your intention is that everybody who comes in the system should be treated appropriately. If they have mental health problems, that should be treated appropriately. If they have substance abuse problems, if they're nonviolent, and so forth. My concern about rolling that into what we call a prison facility is that that may not be the right place for it, no matter how, no matter how well, no matter how well it's designed, because you're starting out with the concept that these people will be in a jail facility, and then you're saying, "How do we meet their needs?" Instead of starting out and saying, "How do we meet everybody's needs, and who needs to be in a jail facility, and who needs to be somewhere else?" So, I, I do believe that the, that the resolution, as I have put it, really encourages thinking from the ground up, that, you know, yeah, maybe we would wind up with, for example, a mental health facility on the, on the jail campus. Maybe we would wind up with a substance abuse facility on the campus, but maybe not. And, and I just want to leave all of those possibilities open to a complete rethinking, because I think that a ground-up rethinking is what we need now. I think the community's ready for that. I think that $32 million price tag has everybody's attention and says, "Oh, my gosh, if we're going to make a big investment, let's think fundamentally about how to get it right."
Did you make a motion? Or not? No motions? Okay. Well, there is a motion on the floor, Jacobson and Ammons. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call? Whoops, sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Madigan, sorry, I didn't see you.
So, just real quickly, and not to turn this into some kind of state issue here, but to defend our new governor.
Yeah, I didn't say he was wrong, I just said he was powerless in this case.
Well, but, but I, I think we're a little bit off of, there's a little bit of a misunderstanding about what he actually is pursuing here. He issued an executive order to create a, a commission to study, study this issue top to bottom, from initial arrest through community reentry. He also wants alternatives studied, but nowhere was there mentioned pushing the prison population back to the locals. I don't really think that's under consideration, and what he's asking for here is a, a more holistic approach to all of, to, to all of this, and it has actually garnered initial bipartisan support.
If, if I could respond, I, I, I totally take your point, and, and in fact, the governor never did say that. It was, it was some members of the county board-
Right.
-who interpreted-
Right.
...the governor's words as implying that, that the governor never has said that. That's right.
Well, that's a relief. Dennis?
And I think that, since, since the topic's been brought up about the discussion at the county board, and Lynn Branham's, the law professor at the U of I's, information about this MacArthur grant, for the public, and, and those of you who are there, you may, you may want to correct my statement, but it seemed that she was, that the MacArthur Grant, the MacArthur Foundation has offered to fund 24 communities across the United States for one year at a, at the rate of $100,000, I believe, to come up with a systemic plan for changing incarceration practice in their communities. And there, she's offered to lead the task force to try to make this, an application to this grant. So, it is a study that's being offered to communities, and it seems the timing is apropos for Urbana and the Champaign County to take it seriously and perhaps try to benefit from this. Then, the MacArthur Grant's going to review these initial plans and choose 14, I think it is, cities in the United States whose plans sound the most promising and the most creative, and will fund them to actually achieve their plan with a, and I can't remember the fund, but it's like a, a $1 million-
$2 million.
$2 million per year for two years for implementation. So, while this may not address perhaps the, the intent of the resolution that Councilman Jacobson is offering us, it is nonetheless a significant opportunity for this community to take advantage of funding from a foundation to achieve the very goals that we're thinking about, in whatever creative way we can vision them, and then potentially money to implement them. So, I would fully support any, any of those people who are taking, would like to, to work seriously on the grant proposal, to contact her and offer assistance to make this perhaps the strongest application that they receive.
Diane?
Well, I'd like to move to add my two statements to the resolution as a friendly amendment.
And what are they?
"Strongly supports efforts to develop a facility design that is flexible and responsive to the needs of the people it houses, and strongly supports efforts to obtain grant funding to develop a co-joined systemic plan for programs and services."
Do you accept that as a friendly amendment?
I'll second it.
Well, I think a friendly amendment is up to the-
Doesn't it?
The person who made the motion.
Thank you, Diane.
Is that correct?
I'll accept the second one as a friendly amendment. I, I would rather not see the first one, because I think the first one implies that mental health and substance abuse, people, you know, people who are being treated for that will still be housed in the jail facility. I, I, I'm not going to fall on my sword over this, I won't be mad if I lose this, but I would, I would like, I'll, I'll accept the second one as a friendly amendment, but the first one, I'd like to go for a vote, and I, I will, I will vote no.
Okay. Are you okay with just doing the second one?
Well, do I have a choice?
Well, you can make a motion-
I'll call for a vote, yeah. I'd move, I'd move to vote on that one.
Let's duke it out.
All right, duke it out. You want that "strongly supports" facility design, and that was, that was your second, right?
"Strongly supports efforts to develop a facility design that is flexible and responsive."
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, well, that one falls by the wayside. Okay, so then we have the motion on the floor with the friendly amendment of-
Can I ask a quick question, though?
Let me just say what it says, "Strongly supports efforts to obtain grant funding." Yes, Mr. Madigan?
Where is that going to be inserted?
Um, well, probably at the end, right? You want to say where it's going to be?
My, I thought that, my, my understanding of Councilman Marlin's intention was that it would be next to the last, that it would follow pledges on behalf of the city of Urbana to actively participate in such planning-
Okay, and then "strongly supports"?
...efforts to obtain grant funding, yeah.
That's fine.
All right. All right, would the clerk please call the roll?
Okay, wait, excuse me, Madam Mayor, I am not clear on what we're voting on.
We're voting on the original resolution with the addition of "strongly," and this is just bef, um, right after "pledges on behalf of the city of Urbana to actively participate in such planning," "strongly supports efforts to obtain grant funding to develop a co-joined syst, systemic plan for programs and services," and that is the MacArthur Foundation grant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
And Mayor?
Yes, Dennis?
I just noticed a typo on page one that you might want to correct also.
A typo on page one?
The last, last sentence reads, "Strongly supports planning that include provisions." It should be "includes," plural?
I think that-
Planning includes-
No, we have, this is the, this is the version that we're voting on right now.
Online says "include."
Okay. Yeah, I got this off, online.
Yes, it should say "includes provisions."
Where, where, where is this? Do I have to look?
It is the very last paragraph on page one, and the word "include," which is the 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth word on that line, should be "includes." the one, two, three, four, fifth word on that line, should be includes.
Okay.
It, it, the verb refers to the, the, the noun, planning. So it's, it's a typo.
All right. Um, do you have that version, Madam Clerk? Okay, thank you. All right, uh, would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
I didn't hear you. He said yes, okay.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Okay, we will move to reports of special committees. I don't believe we have any reports of officers. Any reports of officers? Um, new business, resolution number 2015 dash 03 dash 010R. A resolution of protest against a proposed text amendment to the Champagne County zoning ordinance, request by the Champagne County zoning administrator to amend the Champagne County zoning ordinance concerning heliports restricted landing areas. Would you, um, please say your name?
Christopher Marks.
Okay, Christopher Marks is here from, uh, Community Development to explain this to us. Thank you.
Okay, so a year ago, the Champagne County Zoning Board of Appeals adopted an amendment to their zoning code that added restrictions for heliports and restricted landing areas. Those are special designations as defined by the FAA and the Illinois Department of Transportation for aircraft in the area. It was done in response to a special use permit which was denied for Southern Champagne County, and the suggestion of adding further restrictions to landing areas within the county. And because this would concern the extraterritorial jurisdictional area with the city, it's important to review the, the proposed amendment and decide if it is consistent with the goals in the comprehensive plan for the city, as well as, uh, compatible with the county zoning. Basically, what it does is it adds an extra buffer, so to speak, for heliports in restricted landing areas from areas that are zoned for conservation or recreation, or for dwellings that belong to other landowners as well. When this was adopted last year, it was adopted on the basis of a one-year trial, and that one year is expiring this month. The Champagne County Zoning Board of Appeals is currently in the process of planning to enact those changes permanently. Between last year's, last year's case and this year's case, the differences are minor for the most part, just mostly changes in language, few, um, minor changes, nothing ma, mainly substantive of that nature, so, um, the city doesn't have any properties right now that would be adversely affected by these requirements, and, well, the city has a right to draft a resolution of protest because of matters that would affect the, the ETJ. The review by staff has found that this would not be, uh, inconsistent with the goals and comprehensive plans, so, uh, staff is forwarding this case with a, um, recommendation to defeat a resol, a resolution of protest for the case.
Okay, Diane?
Move that we defeat resolution number 2015 dash 03 dash 010R.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Mr. Madigan?
So what was the original, uh, case that, uh, that brought all this about?
I'm not completely certain with the original case that brought this about. Um, I just know that it was the case in the southern part of the county in which a request was denied, and it, uh, just brought up discussion of greater, um, greater policy towards these, these sort of land uses, and, uh, it's mainly designed to protect conservation areas, as well as, uh, neighboring parcels such as homeowners or dwellings or businesses as well.
Uh, did the Plan Commission consider at all, uh, what the, what the existing FAA, uh, rules and regulations are? What, what are, what are the federal regulations, and how much stricter are these than that?
I believe it's that the, the rules were consistent with, um, with FAA and IDOT requirements as to the threshold of how much further they went beyond what state and federal regulation. I don't believe that was brought into discussion much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
I have to say that I am conflicted here. I don't, I couldn't quite hear everything. Um, can I ask for us to, for further clarity before we vote?
Uh, this is to defeat, uh, resolution of protest. We don't need to protest the county's zoning change, so we're voting to defeat it. We, this is, um, kind of a convoluted thing that comes up from time to time. Would you like to add to that, Christopher Marks?
I was just going to say I can explain, um, in another time. The, the, the city has the right to protest any resolutions that the county might be considering as far as zoning is concerned, because of the one and a half mile area surrounding the city that, uh, might be annexed for future development, and this is a particular zoning case that would just add slightly greater restrictions for landing strips for helicopter, uh, landing sites within, you know, basically for aircraft, and, uh, the city can draw up a resolution of protest if it decides that those particular restrictions are not in its interests, or if it conflicts with city zoning goals. So it's kind of a, a tool to set up in the, in case. Uh, in this circumstance, we don't see any need to use that resolution of protest, so that's why it would be a vote to defeat the protest, 'cause if, um, 'cause staff is recommending that the city does not need to protest this, so-
Okay.
Okay, Charlie wants to say something.
Yeah, and I would add that all, all, all we're doin', when, when we, when we vote to, uh, protest, it simply forces the county board to, uh, have a supermajority vote to pass the res, uh, to pass their zoning change. So in a sense, we're, we're, by voting to defeat that resolution of protest, we are saying that we don't need the county board, uh, we don't need to require that the county board do a supermajority. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, yeah, it, we, we could vote this either way, it's just easier when, when we move it, move to defeat, so we know that we're voting, um, to, to not require the, the county to, to have a supermajority vote.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mike Madigan?
So, yeah, I think a really simple way to put it is if you're for more, uh, restrictions on helicopter, uh, helipads and heliports, if you're for tougher restrictions, lar, larger areas of buffer, then you want to vote yes. If you're, if you want the county board to actually consider what the FAA, uh, restrictions are, and whether or not they ought to actually exceed those, uh, because apparently the FAA, you know, I think they're experts in this, uh, area, and, uh, probably have a very solid, uh, framework, uh, for helipads and heliports, uh, then you would vote no.
Actually, um, the motion is to defeat the resolution.
I think he said it right.
He, so he said it right. Defeat the resolution, and you vote-
It's a resolution of protest.
Yes, right? To defeat it.
I, I think Mike had the correct number of negatives in his logical analysis.
Well, this is convoluted. Okay, so we do have a motion to defeat it, and the-
Okay.
If there are no more comments, would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Wait a minute, are we're voting to defeat?
Yes.
Yes.
We're voting to defeat the county board resolution.
No, no, no.
No, defeat the protest.
Defeat the protest?
Yes.
Okay, I vote yes.
Mr. Madigan?
No.
Oh, Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, Joe.